On Tuesday, the 5th of September at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much for coming. So to start off, we have item 25523. Does anybody have any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests? If anything comes up, speak at that time. Item 25623, apologies for any absence, please Karen.
Apologies have been received from councillors, Burt, Kerry and the phone.
So 25723 is the minutes of the previous amenities committee held on the 1st of August and received by full council on the 31st of August.
Yeah, it was then full council minutes.
Oh, sorry, it was emailed around, right?
We see that, yeah.
Sorry. So did anybody have any comments? And is everybody happy that they are a true record? Okay, great. Oh, just in time. We can move, so we're going to move the agenda around slightly. So Stuart and Tina can talk about the, where are we? The Heritage Master Plan. Thank you. So we're going to move along to item 26623. So who am I passing over to?
It's just going to get the, so Stuart's going to start.
Okay, well, the voters that aren't aware, we are involved in the Heritage Master Plans and a way of levering money down to Setford's various assets. We are, we've got some enabling money to get a multidisciplinary team to work up projects. Intention of these be submitted by the end of this year to take it further forward to draw down the big tapings that are there. The team have given us some presentations based on their findings and suggestions that may, what may be possible. I don't think there's any chattering there for those that have been aware of St Peter's over the years. You've pretty much got an outer envelope that has to stay put because it's a listed building. Within that space, there is potential to do a lot more. So what they've come up with is a number of potential uses. I think the key thing here is flexibility. We have looked at St Peter's in the past, there's been a venue for arts or music or something like that. But what we were, when we went into this process, our thoughts were, we did go through a process of trying to explore this medium term use. And one of the thoughts was this heritage skills offer. And the St Ed's Society in Norwich were looking to be a potential partner in that. I did attend their award ceremony in the summer and spoke to both their interim CEO and their interim general manager. And they are still keen to work with us in that to deliver stuff in that. For those that don't know, St Ed's, they work with people who, young people who probably don't fit with the mainstream education service, but looking vocational wise. So the heritage skills side, bricklaying, carpentry, things like that would fit with what they want to offer. Obviously subdivision of St Peter's would allow them to do bits and pieces in there. I think the consultants have made some suggestions potentially for arts venue, but in the main, there is no money associated with that. It'd be lovely to have an art gallery in town if we haven't got one, but I don't think that. But by having a flexible space, keeping some large areas, there is still potential to use that area for the likes of arts performances or if Ancient House was doing something in a big project, it's, I've always seen it as a potential annex to Ancient House so that even if they've got a busload of seats and can't fit them in there, they can spill over into St Peter's, even if they're just having their lunch in there or want to have a display. Also, you're working with young people and you want to do some arts and crafts stuff within it. By having it there, links to Ancient House and works with that. And I think that would tick the boxes for the lottery to make sure that you've got these potential uses and draw down money. So I think what we've got to do today is obviously put our suggestions back to the multidisciplinary team with them to work up their final proposals, which they will submit in the November time to work to draw down the big monies. Those that aren't aware, we do have conversations going with Historic England about buildings at risk to try and draw down some money there. But we do have to identify this interim use. They don't just give it to you. But if you can show that, you know, you have the interim use for it, then they will bring up that money to draw down, to give us that money, enable to make it a waterproof envelope because the roof is in dire need of repair. Without this project, we will be footing the bill ourselves. So we do need to make sure that we can get all our ducks in a row to draw down this. But now I'm happy to take the question. I'm not being involved in the nitty gritty. I've seen as much as you have there. Just know that I had been on the journey with St Peter's as a councillor. So Tina.
I think added to that as well, looking further than just St Peter's. So we've got St Peter's King's House, Ancient House and Child's Horrory Museum, all in a very small space together. So part of the overarching strategy was that all of those buildings could, if necessarily, be used for one event. So we'll talk, going back to the Ancient House Museum example, a lot of the exhibits that tour the country don't have come here because we don't have the room to put it. However, if we were able to utilise space in all of those buildings, not only would we be able to bring larger exhibitions and things to Setford, we would be able then to use that to create a flow around all our other heritage buildings. But similarly, if there was a big drive on, say, manufacturing apprenticeships or something like that, there was a month's drive in it, we would be able to use all of those spaces again. So it would be like, although they have their own identities, they have the ability to let things flow between those buildings, thus making them more useful to the community. And what we need to look at is sustainability. And one of the things we're being pushed away from is that any one building is just a one-trick pony. Because if that form of income ceases for whatever reason, then there's no sustainability within that building. So although they will all have their integral identity, there's an overarching ability. I mean, the Guildhall will be able to that as well, you know, that there is this ability to flow throughout buildings if necessary. So with St Ed's, they are backed by several construction companies. And one of the ideas of having construction would be, because obviously we've got the SUE, and so there is, over the next few years, work would be available for people who learn those skills within St Peter's. And there is a lead that is identified on heritage skills. So potentially you could have apprenticeships from people like Warren Services. But if they, looking at the Child's Horrory Museum, if there was a piece of the engines, because you can't obviously just order a piece for a traction engine from, you know, whoever anymore, that may have to be computer designed and, you know, have a tool to make it. So there's a potential to have heritage modules of normal apprenticeship modules. There could be something within the town. And also with the construction, you could do that. You could have normal bricklaying, but then there could be a module on flint walling. Or you could have, you know, roofing, but there could also be having, you know, laying the slates and things. So although they would be getting their normal grounding and education that way within those industries, there's the opportunity for this really important layer of heritage skills on the top of that. So that's kind of, we're looking for that. And that isn't available pretty much anywhere within our surrounding area to be able to do it in that manner. And we know a lot of the families within Setford don't have an opportunity to use cars because they don't have access to one. And therefore, having something of that vocation in the town would be very useful to the town and hopefully drive our other wider desires to, you know, push engineering and manufacturing and other vocation for to keep people living in town. So they talked about a mezzanine, that perhaps a mezzanine could go in. Yes, you know, I guess against what it's for. I think it's, also there'd be a space available for a pop-up, whether that be pop-up GPs or pop-up shops or, you know, the short-term usage would be available if the community needed anything. So I guess it's what councillors feel, you know, would be the use of the building. Because, you know, medieval churches are on the top on people's lists to buy because they're quite expensive to run, as we have found out, and they're certainly expensive to repair. So we need, the whole thing now with the new strategies for heritage lottery is that we have to look at making the building sustainable and the usage of the building sustainable. So we have to be able to prove that they're, you know, at the end of five years or maybe go for a 10-year, that that building is still going to be there, still going to be doing stuff, still going to provide things in the community, and we are still going to be looking after it. So it's actually quite a big ask because it is a big project. Of the projects that Setford Town Council have looking at, this is the biggest one. The current estimate for the repair of the roof is about £400,000. It is in our financial risk register. So the funding is incredibly important to us. That's why we've brought in the experts to help us ensure that we put the best quality bid in as possible.
I just have some questions and apologies. Maybe somewhere I've just not yet seen, but I want to go and get lots of funding. Ongoing costs, would that be wrapped up in that? And who would be liable for that? That's my sort of answer.
So what we would have to do, what we're doing at the moment is we're looking at potential use of, and what happens is the people that employ the energy go and write business cases for that usage. What the, when we get those costs back, I can then go to Historic England and say, here's what the costs are, we're getting a rebur for two done on the building as well. And then we will know what work has to be done, we can get that costed. And once we've got that, we can build things around it. So when you apply to lottery, only 40% of the money you ask for can be capital. Okay? And we have to provide a percentage of that. I think they want something like 10%. But then we build the project. So where you would build the projects around it is the education. You'd employ somebody to look after the bookies, look after the building, the education and blah, 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 blah. So that's when you start building it in. So you build in, if we wanted, community groups to use it, what would you put in the building? Would you put officers in that sort of thing? The actual, because it's not open at the moment because it had Death Watch beetle in the beams. So basically you can't have anybody in there.
Death Watch beetle.
Yeah, so basically, basically it could came in.
Yeah.
Because it just eats all the food. So we couldn't have people in there long term. So what's, what needs to happen for the emergency works is they need to take all of the roof off, sort out all the beams, put the roof back on again, which is a significant job. But looking within that, we need to look at the heating, how to make the building sustainable, how to make it more environmentally sustainable. And that we would be able to apply for funding for. So we would be looking at, in the long term, that they would be reducing all of those costs. I mean, our costs for St Peter's at the moment are fairly minimal, aren't they? But also because it's a risk building, if we don't do the work, then we can start being fined for not looking after our others' buildings. I mean, currently, we're, we're trying to do the best, you know, we're doing, taking the best path forward.
So that part of the, basically, we need to look after it now. We need to put some investment into it to reduce running costs that are ongoing.
Yeah.
But in terms of like the event space and stuff like that afterwards, can I just clarify ongoing costs of those things?
We don't, we don't use it at all. Nobody goes in it.
If this plan goes forward, if we propose this forward, do those costs tie up the town council in for something long term? Or is that something, a misunderstanding?
Well, what do you mean then the costs? I mean, if we put people in there for the meanwhile use, we would get the meanwhile hits. So if we put in the education, that would be funded by the lottery.
Yeah. So lottery would fund the education facilities?
Yeah. And if you put in a community hub or something in there as well, that would also be part of the project funding. And the member of staff, we would ask for the money for that as well.
Okay. So the funding will eventually come from heritage funds that we want, are wanted to apply for as part of this decision.
Yes, yeah. So we then have to build the place. What are we going to use for? What are we going to do with it? How are we going to provide social value to our community? How are we going to improve the environment? How are we going to look after the graveyard? How are we going to make the building more sustainable? How are we going to reduce our carbon footprint? It's a lot.
Yeah. It is a lot, sorry.
And this is just kind of like the starting is, the starting point of getting to, you know, A to Z is what are the, what are councillors happy that we use this building for? What do you think are worthwhile things for the town for us to have in it? Because the works is the works. What we have to do to the building externally is dictated by someone else. What we do internally is up to us. And that that's about how do you use that building in a sustainable way? Which is why they've only asked us for a five-year meanwhile use project. So if it doesn't work after five years, we can look and look for some. But we would then have to look for something else. We can't just walk away and go, oh, well, I did, but, you know.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so forgive me if I'm talking too much because I'm just unaware, I came slightly late, so I'll probably miss some introductory stuff. But what we're basically looking at, this is the proposal, what we think would be an initial plan, and there'd be more information coming later.
So if you think back about, we'd like to look at, you know, like the education, yeah, go for that, you know, flexible use of the rooms. One of the other things is we already have it, we've got planning permission for an arch to be put in the walls that into the back car park so that they can be disabled for better access from the car park into the Peters. So it'd be about doing that, creating access. There would be some, obviously, we'd have to do some heritage work, finding out about the history of it, presenting that in some ways in the, in the church. So it is about, you know, what, what do you think is a good use of that building? That will be sustainable moving forward? Because the heart, you know, we have to talk about what we think the usage is, but actually when we give it to them, then the job is they go away, they write the business cases, they tell us our actual costs. Do you think it's a good idea, bad idea? And then they bring back another council person to look at.
Thanks for clarifying that. Sorry for taking too much.
Did you?
Yeah, did you? When you talk about £400,000 for the roof.
Yes.
Wasn't there an issue with the slats of the tower as well?
Yes.
That's extra?
No, I think they included that within the emergency cost.
All right, okay.
Yeah, this seems an awful lot of money for something whose purpose is incredibly ill-defined. Not sure what the value to the town and the townsfolk is. I'm very concerned that, I use an allegory as I usually do. When I was a young lad, I bought a car, bit of a banger, I spent some money on it, on the gearbox, because that wasn't working. And I spent some money on the, on the engine because that wasn't working. Then I got it serviced and after a while, it was just a load of money for a load of rubbish. And I, I'm not saying this is a load of rubbish, but it does feel like we would be tying ourselves into maybe chucking good money after bad. And I'm very cognizant in this light of what happened in the Guildhall. We had the, was now the T room, was given a sum of money to become an information hub. Which hasn't really happened and is now losing us a lot of money every year. So my concern is the potential for this to lose huge sums of money every year without a defined purpose.
I think the difference to your analogy is that we either have to fix it all with our money or fix it all with somebody else's money.
Yeah, so I, obviously, I think the idea of having a versatile space is a good one. I like the idea of education. I guess I'm, would there be a kind of discovery period where we have somebody doing research on what the town needs?
Yeah.
You know, if we turned into office space, if anybody actually used it, or if we turned into workshops, would people use it? So I guess we can have opinions, but it would be better to have like a study that shows what's out there.
Once you, once the business case comes forward, there would be a time within that, within the project where there would be a development of those plans. So the plans would come back and be a development plan. And it's a bit like the Guildhall as well. We had the choices, the Guildhall was born from £50,000 worth of funding. If we hadn't done that, the town council would have to pay that money. So, you know, the bits are in, well, because it's our responsibility and our buildings, you know, but then it makes sense for us to get, spend a lot of those buildings because they're not going to stop being our buildings. So, you know.
Yeah, I'm interested to use the term best value. These buildings seem to just be sucking up money. I don't think there's any value, is there?
But then there are assets.
You know, I think, I think, yeah, I'll just do it.
Well, thank you. I quite like these plans. I think they're improvements in as we've managed before. I can't, we can't ignore the point Terry's been making, that there needs to be evidence of likely footfall. And I think one of the other drugs we have to do is look at other places in town and see whether there are other places people can go to. So we're not looking at it from the point of view of us, the owners, looking at it from the point of view of those who might want to hire it out. We have got some good alternatives and not only that, but others may come, become available. I'm thinking particularly of two. One is the United Reform Church, which is now, has got quite a limited take-up in terms of those attending its services. I can see that building becoming available and it already is available for hire in any case. The other is, maybe someone can put me right on this, and that's Maryleines, which has stood derelict on Berry Road for several years, but was taken up by someone who said that she wanted to revamp it and open it up and make some use of the centre. She had several plans, one of them was housing, but others would be more similar to this. So I think we want to be sure that there's a real need in the town for significant development. On the other hand, I think Terry and others have got, have faced some real difficulty that we are in effect stuck with it. We paid a pound or whatever it was for this building, we've got it. And we are supposed to look after medieval buildings in our possession. So there's a difficult issue either way. And I think I'm just finished by saying, if anyone can knock out Maryleines, that'd be one, one building hacker and say, and say, no, that's nothing going to happen there. I don't know whether Terry knows, whether Stuart knows anything or whether Sam Clark knows anything about that.
No, it's still in private ownership as far as I'm aware. But obviously, I think we would be pushed very hard by heritage organisations, the fact that they wouldn't want to lose too many medieval churches in one town. And, and it is that responsibility that, you know, for good or bad, it's ours and we're responsible for it. And we're responsible for the health and safety, we're responsible. And if we wanted to sell it, we would have to bring it up to scratch before we sold it. And, and I think it's very difficult to find a commercial usage, which is why these things come to local councils. You know, and it's not potentially the best scenario for us as a council that we have these buildings. In some ways it is because if we didn't look after it, then perhaps it will show the same favour to Maryleines as well, as with our heritage buildings. But whatever your view is on whether they're valuable or not, it doesn't change the fact that we're responsible for them and we won't have to do the work on.
Was that on that point?
It's a good bit on the same thing, yeah. Everyone knows my opinion on these buildings, but I honestly don't. I'm not going to. I mean, my theory is we know we have to do so because we're left with it. The plans we have, how long would it take for the money to come back that we've been invested in at any time? So we're back in the black. I mean, if we invest X amount of money in this, £400,000, which is going to be.
Yeah, but we couldn't be taken.
No, it's not. We have to pay some, we've got to keep the building going. When the plan, supposedly things don't work out, right? You know, plan B and nothing happens, we're then left yet again with this big old building. I mean, we really have to make sure that this doesn't cost them, right, by its residents at Setford a fortune, to be fair, because we've got to make sure they get value for money. And all the options we have had so far for St Peter's Church haven't worked, have they?
No, because they're not really, they weren't really sustainable because they tended to be all functionalities that were dependent on individuals rather than organizations. And that tends to be the downfall, if things go well for five, six years, then if that one key person goes, then.
Yeah, I see that. I mean, I suppose if you put them down to church and pubs, people don't use them, they'd stop being.
Yeah, just, you know, Terry talks about the Guildhall. I just think without having the work done to improve the access to that building, like disabled access and disabled toilets and that, we would have a building that we couldn't use as much as we do now. Obviously, the tower being, of course, is a little bit of an issue in terms of functionality at the moment. But again, that's being addressed as part of this wider thing of trying to draw down capital monies for the town. And we've had lots of talk over the years of how are we going to get money? But nothing's happened. We've now, as a town council, taken the bull by the horns, engaged with the lottery, got through the first process, which is a big task to do, getting the enabling money to do these plans, which takes us to another step. By having those conversations with both lottery, Historic England, you are accessing money. But if you didn't do, you would just be sitting there floundering. Like you say, Chris, you, you have an asset, four hundred bits round your neck, and it would be a lot of money to get in. It's better from a town council perspective to attract funding so that it keeps our buildings in a better shape. So that if at some point in the future we need to offload it, it's in a better shape for us to do that. Or if we have the use for it, that can obviously make a benefit to the town, we still minimise our costs, it's got to be like, but, you know, we've done well to get through the first stage, to get this money, to get the skilled multidisciplinary team to do that. Because if we did it ourselves, we'd be paying architects' fees and what have you. So we've got some plans together. I think there's some work to do and those plans will evolve as discussions go forward with the lottery. But I think it's, this is our task here to, to shape what potential uses we see. But also you will be mindful of what money will, what uses will attract the funding to keep the thing going. And we've identified that this heritage skills thing is a potential goer. And I think that's the way that, you know, we're taking it at the moment.
Can I just say, so this evening, the decision required is to select the project we believe should be in the Heritage Master Plan. Did you want to, I'm not quite sure how we, I think we all feel like we haven't got the information to make that.
To be honest, there isn't anything other than this. They have just put forward three ideas, your initial ideas. And these are based on stuff that we've done over the last, like, I don't know, how many years, St Peter's, 10 years, 12 years, something like that. So they have said, these are potentially what you can do in that building. So if you like the idea of these usages, pick the one that you like and they will go back and do further architectural work, further stonemasses, further development of the plan, and they will start building the business plan for that proposal. So this isn't like, if we pick this, that's it, we can't change our minds. This is, this is what the architects think we can do in the building, that would be acceptable to do in the building. So we go with that.
Okay. I think the thing is, we, it's asking what we, yeah, it's asking what we like, but we don't know what we need necessarily.
But that's the whole thing, is what the business case is for. You can't, you can't do consultation first.
But I mean, could, is there a way we could do?
And that's done consultation about heritage. And there's done consultation about heritage.
Yeah, so just an overview of how many spaces we have for office spaces that aren't being utilised or different. So is there any way to?
Where, where in town?
Yeah, like owned by the council.
Or by us.
Or in, in, in. So like in here, we would know.
There isn't any stuff. There's only the mantra, it's not a lot.
Yeah. Um, okay, so you had everyone talk.
Yes, I was excited. I can, like, I understand the stream correctly now, which choosing one, which it seems really hard because it does feel like we need some information of what is. I mean, for me, I'm looking at what is going to be the one with the least ongoing costs, like uh what's going to prevent us from having something around our necks for the next twenty years as opposed to, you know, just deemed the problem. I don't see anything on this. I'm sort of a little.
But that's not what that is. All this is, is ideas. What do, what do council want to put in there?
These ideas will lead on to something, won't it?
Yes, but we don't know what those costs are because until you tell them what you want to do, we can't.
Very chicken and eggy.
This is, welcome to lottery families.
I mean, so essentially we're saying we're going to sit here and just guess what we think makes most sense for Tethers.
Well, I think you think back on what the city's useful in this. And the just thing is, it is that, you know, who, who would have thought what came down the line in the last few years? None of us, you know, it's, it's always about what do you think would be a good use of the building? We send it back, they develop it, we have a look at it again. If you want to tweak it, you tweak it. But you have to start somewhere, and this is like.
These three things are, these are three things we think might.
And they think that they could actually do that in a church.
Yeah, I consider myself quite fortunate that I'm not actually a member of this committee because I won my vote on this because I don't know anything about it. Um, there doesn't seem to be any strategic endpoint here. Um, it doesn't seem to be going anywhere. It's just, um, sort of, uh, allowing a load of money to be spent on something or other. I think we should defer it. That's my view.
But they can't develop it any further until you send them some feedback.
But there's no feedback to give.
Well, there is. What?
Well, there's, well, there's not. I mean, we, we, we're starved of information here. All we've got is, is that map. You know, I couldn't in all good conscience.
So do you think what's on the plans would be a good use of the space?
I, I have no idea because I don't know. And this, this is my point. We've been asked to vote on something we have no idea about. That's, that's my view anyway. I'm just going back to inform councillors, we did go through a process of engaging with Tricola before we got this far, during lockdown, Mike may remember this. So they did look at other potential places around the town, what, so you weren't duplicating ones of offer. And so this meanwhile used was something that came out of that work as a potential thing that would be appropriate for you.
So that's the three, the three different options are all the things that could work.
Tricola were very conscious is that if you, one of the things was like an archway, it just that you wouldn't get something that the ongoing costs of an archway just doesn't, you know, so.
So there are consultation with several of the community groups or councils in Peter's.
You'd pay Tricola for that.
Could be used, and if people had things that they didn't want them to do because it was a conflict, well, they'd do it. And that was all new, that consideration.
We were guided by that work before we went to this, it for the disciplinary team. Uh, and so that's why I think they've guided it along the lines that they had.
Okay. Um, so you talked about flexible use. Do you have a recommendation of the preferred option from obviously background, but this is kind of, we're just looking at these three pictures.
I think, well, that's all we've had as well. I think that, um, with anything at the back, that flexibility and having more than one stream of income is a sensible way to go. So you're not reliant on one stream of income. So should there be an issue with that stream of income, have a backup. Um, we know that lottery and Historic England are keen on the education side of it, but they're also keen on it being flexible. So if you use it useful for the community. Um, and I think if, you know, uh, even if it was all in really, really good condition and we didn't have to do any external works, we as a council would probably have to be thinking about flexible use for it in order for it to actually generate income for the town. I think potentially from a pragmatic point of view, if you ask it for a bit of a flexible usage, then what you will get back is business plans that own different things that it could be useful and see how much money could be generated from that and how much conversions would cost. So you're asking for them to do more work in providing several configurations of that flexibility for the next thing for you to look at.
I agree. We did that basically to get several more drawings that look just like this without any more information.
No, the thing is, is if you go away with this, they will have to develop a business plan. So the next thing is, it's like everything else. If I simply want to build a house, the first thing you'd say to me is, I want three bedrooms, two bathrooms.
So I'm saying, if we're saying, with, with, you know, when these options quiet, I don't want this to be more flexible.
Yeah.
Would they make a business case for that fourth option that we've just created, or would they come back with option four?
If you said my last bit or.
And it could be like this.
Option two, this bit of option three, every feedback I will send. And they will do something. And then they will bring the business case back. And when they actually have that kind of information, they probably need to sit in this meeting with you.
Okay, so.
Or they need to have a meeting outside of that, so you can have a couple of hours looking for.
Whatever happens, it wouldn't be if we presented this, we get this back in a month's time. It would be we get the next stage, something a bit more that we can at least, um.
This literally is.
To you, I think. Okay, thanks.
We've come to a state now where we're discussing this building ever since I've been on the coast. It's a better time we move forward and make the decision now, which is going to be the right one for the future. If we don't do anything, it's going to fall down and cost us even more and more. And it's really hard to have a look at this. It's not that the cost has not been able to look at it.
Well, we've already paid them.
Yeah, so I mean, that's. When we get more and more information, when we can make a proper inform.
This is actually step one.
It could be my way.
Of course, that's a pretty for.
I mean, it is a wise, it has to be something with it. So let's see what else.
Yeah, I think if I had to choose, then I feel like, and the first drawing is, is based on skills teaching really, and the next picture is this, and I feel like I don't know what a skills workshop is for having a skill on to create co-working space. But if they are different, then the first one that we're focusing on skills and exhibition feels quite niche. And like we would be potentially reliant on a particular stream, which if it came off, we'd be all right, but if it didn't, we'd be quite restricted. Um, the second one is the co-working space, I think. All right.
So that's basically your office space.
And they look, um, that looks pretty easy. You could use that in different ways. Again, I'm not sure how that looks different to an event space. You could design a co-working space which could, if you wanted it to, turn into an event space.
And that's what we mean by having the flexibility of the building, that you have spaces within it that you can pretty much, yeah.
I like the fact that the second one has got meeting spaces, smaller meeting spaces in it. I'm not sure if that one needs massive meeting spaces. So personally, I, I would go for the second one of these three options. On, on the rise of that you can convert those spaces into other spaces should you need to. There's mine.
Um, I would say many ways it's still abstract because like, it'd be interesting, I, I've no idea how the skills teaching area would be different to a co-working space area, but just in general. If we're looking about what gets funding and what's most likely to get funding, I think it's the skills inherited, the skills one. Because I think that is where there will be money invested, essentially. There won't be money invested in offices except by private companies. Um, that might be from heritage things. So based on that, I have a slight doubt for one, but it does feel very willy-nilly. So I'm very happy if other people have stronger preferences.
But then we can go back and say we want the skills heritage, but we also want the other spaces to be more flexible. Either the office space, meeting spaces, or maybe for small, um, because the skill space will be like, you'll have to have a bit in it, you know, that does that bricklaying or something like that. Whereas the other rooms.
I can think of a couple of these, well, organisations, churches, obviously would actually appreciate those kind of things as well. Um, but I think most of them can be done quite flexibly from what, when I visit, um, other training, training bodies. Even if they're bricklaying, it's actually quite very little that they do, you know, training area. They do on site. So a good thing is very much a very basic thing. So I think it's going to be quite flexible anyway.
Yeah.
Looking at number one, there's this, I'm assuming the dotted line in the skills teaching is like a wall that's moving potentially this.
It basically becomes.
A removable wall. So, so you would be. Yeah, yes.
There was already like an office space in there, because there's a lot of space, a kitchen. Um, and there is a natural demarcation where the columns are and where the congregation sits. So they're natural, um, demarcations of areas that they're, they're used within those, as working within those natural spaces.
Can we not, uh, take the new councillors in to have a look?
I believe there isn't, there are heritage site walls next week that councillors were invited to, to go and do our heritage assets. I think it's next Wednesday, next Thursday.
Some of us have been in and obviously lots, no one's happened. I guess we're all.
Um, okay. So, I mean, I kind of get the feeling, we're talking about this flexibility, thinking about where funding's coming. The, it's more about the size of the rooms and whether there's a kitchen in there where there's sockets. And that, that's going to be the main difference in things, where the toilets are. We're thinking that we want to, we would like to take the avenue of funding in terms of education and skills and that kind of thing. So if we said option one, that we'd like to look in a bit more detail at the options for the spaces. Okay. Any other comments on this at the moment?
No.
Um, I'm sort of swaying towards Terry's sound. I, I don't, I, I, it's an awful lot of money for something like that. You're looking at a skills workshop, which, if you're going to do things like bricklaying, why, why would you use small sort of interior of a church when we've got industrial estates where that can be done? Um, and the fact is, if you're delivering raw materials into the town, surely it's going to be a problem for lorries to get around that bit of road anyway to deliver the materials for a skills workshop. Um, that is sort of the way I'm looking at it. It's, I'm not sounding negative, but I just don't get why we'd need a skills workshop in a church that's going to cost four hundred thousand pound with a roof when we've got other buildings in Tethers, which probably don't belong to Tethers, but we can't utilise their spaces.
Um, so I get the impression the skills workshop is in terms of education and rather than.
Yeah, it's, it's more for the, um, academy age, although they can be workshops for people to learn those things. And it is on a very small scale, not going to have a massive one intermingling up with other materials.
Say, I think, yep, as long as this is just, we're making a decision to move forward without investing basically any more money. I think it's fine to look at, and my understanding is that skills workshops for things like bricklaying etcetera don't actually involve getting a load of bricks and doing it in there. You do like one or two days discussing how some network etcetera, and then you go onto a site with an actual builder. So I'm assuming it would be more like in that sense.
Okay. And we're not going to gain any more information by deferring, and we want to move this forward in terms of funding and actually making it happen. So are we feeling most comfortable with looking at option one? Take that forward?
I'd say definitely yes, um, with the idea that this is a first point in many point joints where we'd have more detailed discussions and decisions to make.
Um, right, so I need to ask for a proposal for us to do this, right? So who?
To give that public feedback, so it's not a council decision.
Okay, so we don't need to do that. Okay, are we happy with that?
Let's go and see.
So we could have done the meeting just for that, I think. All right, thank you.
I believe we do have to do something outside of the meeting first, so we can just spend days just looking at pieces of paper and talking to architects and things.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So let's move on to two hundred and fifty-eight, twenty-three. We have the burial administrator's cemetery report. So I think that was sent around in the packs and I think Alan's going to just talk us through that.
Burial administrator is ill, so I'm going to be a man of many talents tonight. Um, essentially what the report covers, it just gives you an update. Since the date of August, we've carried out a total of twenty-five internments. Twenty-three were ashes internments, nine were internments in the old deposit, seven, thirteen were internments in the cemetery extension. Uh, we have three ashes internments booked and one burial in the cemetery extension booked for September. We also have one ashes internment booked for October. Essentially, we've got about three, three per month internments left. Um, so we, we have to continuously monitor the situations. And when we reach twenty internments, because we've got limitations as to how many we can actually have in the new section, we'll have to come back and, and inform the committee. And then we have to just really manage that because that situation arises every, every few years. So that's really what, 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 what we'll do going forward. Um, the report also just covers some, some work that the burial administrator had done on reading. And I think the key issue is on the second page of the report, where she says the reason for men, men, mentioning the situation that, for example, Reading has, is because we currently have nineteen years of burial space left in the cemetery extension. However, if we are limited to twenty-five coffin burials per year in the cemetery extension, which is very low for the, the town of the size of Tethers, which is expanding, we will get to the situation where we're going to run out of cemetery space. And I think really what Kerry has really asked us to do is kind of put back on the long-term agenda, uh, what, you know, some thoughts about the cemetery. And we look, you know, that, that has to come back on when we do a little bit of our capital budget planning. What are we actually going to do and what is, becomes our longer term plan? But I want to go through the reading experience. Uh, the second thing that was a carry forward point from many, many meetings ago, well, months ago, we haven't had that many cemetery meetings. Um, Kerry was asked to put forward the, the notice boards, the proposed notice boards, that was just asked to come to this committee to support or comment. Uh, we'll see that there are two photographs of the existing notice boards which are, which are out of date. Uh, and then there's a suggestion one and a suggestion two, uh, which take into account where we, where we were at the time uh, of, um, these meetings took place as to what the wording is. And we, we are doing that trial where the cemetery is open in summer continuously. Um, so it might be worthwhile just for the committee to note this. And at the end of that pilot, we'll be in a position then to actually just refine the wording and bring it back for formal approval and sign-offs. But it's just really just a suggestion on what those, what that reading would be. Uh, and it will technically cut whether the cemetery will actually remain open in the summer months, uh, once we persist that pilot.
So is it, am I thinking of something else, or is it the cemetery where we were talking about having the changeable opening hours on the sign?
Well, what we've got is, is if we go to keep it open for the summer months, which is, which is what the pilot will do, then you could actually put, that wouldn't have to be variable. You know, you'd just say winter, between this period and this period, cemetery's open for that period of time. And, um, uh, you access it through the car park or where you access it from. And, uh, if, if, if it's winter closing, it's, it's open and closed from that period of time. So I don't, I, I, I think the thing of, you know, having something that we would change it quite often. I'm not sure that that's really on the agenda, but maybe we can. But that, you know.
Yeah, I just, I feel, I might, I might be thinking of something else.
Yeah, I think, I think that was talked about before the pilot was.
Okay.
Finally approved.
Okay, so um in terms of this wording, what does, she sent, Kerry sent an email around to all.
It's exactly the same.
Yeah.
That she said.
So she, she just wants us to note this in reply to her email?
Once we've, at the end of this month, we, once we finish the pilots, it would be a lot easier then to actually say, well, this is what the pilot results are. Uh, we'll change the signage to reflect the result of that pilot. And this is what we'll, we'll kind of wording it will have. And if there's any other suggestions in the meanwhile, you know, bits and bits are always free to.
Okay, because I think she did send the email around and asked us to get back on what we thought about the wording.
Yeah.
In that case, we can just send in any of the suggestions by email.
You're great to hear.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Happy to note that report? Great. Okay, so we'll move on to 25923 and I'll hand over to Nick to take us through the town team manager's packs, please.
Okay, so I'll try and brief it down as quick as I can without going through the whole lot of detail. So the town team over the month of August have been carrying out various tasks, including various amounts of maintenance and cleaning, as well as reporting any issues under Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council ownerships to help along with issues around the town. Um, other works have also included graffiti removals, street furniture cleaning, clearance of vacant allowances and keeping the cemetery site maintained. So we've done some correspondence with other councils, including Breckland and Norfolk. Uh, so Breckland Council, um, on the last amenities meeting, um, was asked to look at two bin applications um from a local resident complaining about litter along hailing path. Um, initially, they weren't prepared to install any litter bins extra along the route, but they have now confirmed that they will look into this further and try and address the ongoing issues along that sort of pathway into the town, which seems to be causing a lot of problems for the local residents. Norfolk County Council were contacting in regards of the underpasses and missions cleaning following the last amenities meeting. Um, I'm pleased to inform you all that Breckland Council and Circle have now agreed and are currently putting in place a weekly cleaning schedule for all underpasses around the town. Drain issues at the minister gate have also been rectified and are now currently working again where this was getting constantly flooded. Um, so hopefully that's going to improve that area quite a bit. Uh, Breckland have also confirmed that they are now also working on the redecoration and the removal of graffiti, as well as removing any broken artwork from each of these. Uh, further updates will be available in due course. The team have been busy um working and cleaning and washing graffiti off the town's street furniture um on TTC land and play parks as part of their regular weekly screening schedules. Just seeing further assets around the town centre and estates and play parks all cleaned and looking fresh. There's some pictures there of the work the team have been doing. Uh, they've also been refurbishing some of the cast iron benches on the Castle Park site, where a lot of them are getting a little bit tired and worn. Um, so these are now being refreshed with a fresh coat of paint and looking much nicer, and it obviously improves the area tremendously. Flytips have been a little bit of an issue on some of our land, including areas of Barnham Common. Um, they've also been sort of carrying out litter picks um close to the river on the Barnham Common site. So obviously the activity has been a little bit more down there over the school holidays. People are obviously flocking down there to enjoy the area, but obviously they're leaving behind all the undesirable bits that we don't want them to. Other tasks the team have also carried out, um, has been raising the canopies on the lower branches, allowing clear access on the cemetery site, um, as well as other sites that we own, including Ford Meadow. And they're still currently working on that site as we speak. Uh, reseeding um to open spaces on tree works at Mill Lane. Um, improvements to memorial tree curbs and bases around memorial trees. In Square, um, they've also had a tidy up around the area there. Um, they've replaced missing posts to Melford Common. Um, and this is an ongoing job at the moment. We're waiting for the supplier to get a new order of posts in. They've got a bit of a shortage on those. So we're waiting for them to come in and they will carry on replacing the ones that are missing and rotten around the Castle Park and Melford Common. Lotman clearances are continuing, um, and these are all being prepared for new tenants to take on, um, so that's going well. Again, some more photos for you to all see. Play parks, repair works to the town's play parks are currently being carried out. Uh, the works that have now recently been committed, completed are on the following sites, Richard Easton and Fairfields. Um, works will soon be commencing shortly um on the following areas of the town. And that'll be Main Street, Bergamon, Castle Park and Pine Close. And there's various pieces of equipment there that are listed that will be changed in due course as part of the maintenance programme. SAM two, the SAM two machine is currently installed on the Mumford Road and is gathering data to be analysed on the amount of speed and traffic within the area. This will be here for a maximum of four weeks um before being moved on to its next location, which we hope to be is Castle Street in due course. All data is being gathered and will be produced and passed over to both Norfolk Highways and Norfolk Police. Some of the other reported bits and pieces around the town that you might be aware of or come across, um, that we're aware of and, and wait for contractors to work on. So we've got St Peter's Church Wall on White Hart Street, where there's some debris coming out of the flint wall. Uh, we've got some railings and brickwork missing on Gentles Bridge. And also there's a damaged railing that we're aware of that's on Lady Gentles Field. Common bylaw signage, so the common bylaw signage has now been proofread and adjustments were made following the last amenities meeting with the updated bits and pieces. This has now been sent off to the company for the new signs to be produced. And these will be placed in the various sites, including Barnham Commons, School Lane, Luns Bridges, Melford Common and Elm Road in due course. The Barnham Common access gates for mobility scooters, we had a request come in from a member of the public regarding mobility access. So quotations were sought for the possibility and consideration of mobility scooter access on the Barnham Common site. Gates are available for these purposes. Um, this could be something that the committee would like to consider going forward potentially for a request from a member of the public recently asking if access would be something that could be considered and made available. The gate works on a basic radar key system, very similar to those accessible toilets we have around the town. The only problem surrounding these that has been sort of found on other sites from historic England um is obviously there's no permanent pathways that are currently suitable um for these mobility scooters to use. So they're obviously going to be going over very unsteady ground and levels are very quick changing, um, so stability is not great. Um, so there's a cost in on that one, just as an idea. Um, quotations, uh, we're also sought for the automated opening and closing of the cemetery gates. Um, that was obviously asked by one of our committee members. So we went out and got some costings and again, they're sort of displayed on the report. Um, so that could be an option going forward for the cemetery site. Moving on to the conservation volunteers, the volunteers have been busy working alongside David, our town team member, uh, throughout the month of August. The group have been busy clearing side bank vegetation around the site of the Creep and Marsh Hall. Um, this has been sort of carried out to allow the plant to gather more light, um, and not being sort of spread out by the vegetation around the areas of the edges of the site. Group have also continued to work hard and support the cemetery. Um, and they've been litter picking and maintaining some of the flower borders and getting involved in some of the pond bits up there, um, and doing some wildlife recording. Uh, fence line and litter pick patrols have been carried out regularly um around the site of the Barnham Common. And they've been checking all the gates and fences that are in good working order for our current grazing that's currently grazing one area of the common presently. The volunteers have also been busy going around the pathways at Castle Park, trying to get some of the vegetation that's coming over the fence lines um onto the public access footpaths. So they've been working hard on that. Um, they've also been clearing some of the vegetation on the Castle Park steps, um, again, where it's been encroaching, so they've had a good tidy up around there. Um, another task have been sort of carrying out, which was recently mentioned on the management plans, is the removal um of golden rod um from the area. So they've been trying to tackle some of that where it's been kind of increasing on some of the areas. Um, in total, um, over the month of August, um, the conservation volunteers have um done sixty-seven point five hours of volunteer time for us.
Good, Nick. Always great to see what you've been doing. Uh, Terry.
Um, thanks, Nick. That feels like a lot of very, very good work. So, well, well done.
Thank you.
Everybody. Um, I think we should shout about this. There's a press release due um on any of this. I'm thinking particularly of the underpasses.
Yes.
And other stuff as well.
Yep.
Um, we need to be shouting about the good things we're doing, don't we?
Has the underpass cleaning started?
It's due to start in due course, so I can get some updates from Breckland and then obviously we can have that ready to go on the press release. So we know exactly when that's going to be taking place, just so we've got the information correct for the public.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with um his first remarks, certainly. I wanted to raise this year, the conservation group's work, Nick.
Okay.
They were the area where the creeping marsh work is.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't know if you can imagine this, folks, but if you don't know the area, um, there's, there's a lower area and then um around it, the proportions aren't right, this center's too big, but around it, there's a, a slightly higher area. So you walk down to get onto the area where the creeping marsh work is. And um, it's, it's badly overgrown all around it, so you can't get onto that area. So what the conservation group did was to try and cut down the heavy growth on the riverside of the, of the, of the rectangle. I think that they bit off a lot more than anyone would wish them to have to chew. I watched them do it. I watched them sweating at it. I've watched the regrowth that's taken place in the several weeks since. Um, I, I wonder whether one of two other alternatives should be tried in that area because it is important that we get to the creeping marsh. No point having this where flower, people can't see it. And one alternative is, is to take machine and cut round the outside so that it's machine cut. And then there's the, the stuff is taken away because otherwise you're just enriching the soil even more. And you get more of these rather ambitious plants, including golden, golden, what's it called, golden rock?
Got it right.
Um, nettles have, but thistles have come back quite in number in the area. Or perhaps we should just concentrate on cutting a path from the car park to the creeping marsh work and another path at the other end, so that people can walk onto the site without us having to try and maintain this very vigorous growth of sites around it, which seems to me to creating, you know, it could be done two, three, four times a year. So I wonder whether there's a better way of dealing with that problem.
Yeah, that's something we could certainly explore for you. Yeah, certainly looking to.
Thank you.
Hey, could I just back up and look like great stuff's been done and say thanks for all that and I particularly think that killing the underpasses is really good, that that's now going to be done regularly. Um, I just wanted to ask a very particular question about the SAM two machine. Um, it said, you said that data is now being passed back to the Norfolk Police. I didn't think they dealt with that. I thought.
We're passing on as a, a member of the sort of information over to them.
Oh, okay.
We'll be going to both highways and Norfolk Police, just to make them aware of bits that are going on within those areas.
That makes sense. I just misunderstood the previous conversation.
Um, I was just going to say, so I guess we don't know, they're taking this artwork away from the, from the underpass.
Yeah.
We don't know if there's plans to.
Again, I can explore with Breckland in a discussion and just see what their plans are, just to be informed of what's coming back.
That would be their.
Yeah.
That would be their responsibility.
Sort of local groups or organisations perhaps to replace, yeah?
Originally, the artwork in the underpass on the Mumford Road was all made by pupils from the Thetford Academy.
Thetford Academy.
Pupils killed near there quite a few years back. Um, and I'm pretty sure the Thetford Academy would like to have an input in what goes back in there for one of their ex casters. Or, like, it was a principal time here. Gary.
I, I, I agree with you that they should be encouraged to come back and do again.
Yeah.
This suggests that our Breckland councils take that directly back to Breckland. This is their asset and I'll be, I'll be better placed to open as that happening with the academy.
I had something else, but it's not about this. If anyone has had any underpass related stuff. Oh, I didn't want to go over it, but it just suddenly occurred to me after thinking about the, the gate options and so the, you've got to create for the solo automated gates for cemetery and things like that. Um, at some point, presumably we'll need to think about that. Is that when we'd look at budget setting? Would that be make a sensible choice when we're looking at budgets for next year to factor that in? I check when that would be, just so I can back it on my own headed.
That could probably be projects that will be a bit later on. Probably be early January, February next year.
Early January, February when we'd start planning about it.
Projects.
Uh, inside of it, yeah.
Okay.
Correction, budget will be finalized by November.
Um, Nick, can you, on the subject to, I know you've done, you've sort of done a lot of good work there um regarding the trees in like the, the area between Woodlands and Fairfields.
Yes.
We're still getting a number of, a lot of complaints regarding the house that, from Woodlands that are backing onto the Woodland. I know the trees have been deteriorating, they're in good condition, but they are leaning.
Right.
Um, and I know people say, well, they, they live near woods, that's what they expect, but it's still, they're still big old trees. Is there any way of maybe tidying them up?
So recently I've just met with the tree surveyor, um, he's been on site there for last week, surveying the trees up at the Fredericks Wood um and had a look at those. So he's now going to put together um a maintenance plan of what can be looked at potentially going forward around some of the perimeter trees.
Right.
Um, so that's something that can be explored a little bit further, um, but he's going to go away and do some sort of write-up bits and pieces about how we go forward with that. Um, but yeah.
Lovely, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'm pretty happy to note the report. Great. Okay, so next we have 26023 preliminary financial reports. And I believe I'm handing over to Alan.
Okay. Um, in terms of the report, it's preliminary because it's so early in the month. I mean, Friday was when the month ended, uh, we, we have to wait as late as possible, sure that we get all the costs in. Otherwise, uh, there's a risk that we will exceed the committee. But from a revenue perspective, um, our income is up. We're scratching our heads a little bit because the RPA consistently, you have many years ago, you used to pay in December, January, we'd get a certain amount in. And in the last eighteen months, two years, the money's coming in all over the show. So the committee tasked me to follow up with our consultants. I have done that. Unfortunately, they're away on leave until Monday, the fifth. Today's Tuesday, the fifth, but the, I have office emails that Monday, the fifth of September. So as soon as I hear from them, I'll be able to provide more clarity. We're a little bit unsure. I think some of this could be last year's uh, uh, RPA money. It's just the way that, 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 that's run, but I'm just, I have no, I have no basis to justify my comments. So from an income perspective, we're up, we're still hoping to get at least thirty thousand pounds of RPA money. So hopefully in November, December, uh, another chunk will, uh, will come in. And I think when we had the discussion about management plans, one of the interesting things was to look at how much money we get paid versus the costs of what we do and just to make sure that that's not informing some of the things that we do. So that exercise ties into, into the financial side. On the expenditure side, um, there's been two kind of significant changes. The first one's around play parks. Um, we thought that a lot of the costs were due to vandalism. Uh, but I did an analysis this afternoon and vandalism is not very, not very high. There's a lot of orders to have vandalism where it's done, but it actually hasn't been done yet. So we, we've had some vandalism at Main Street, for example, none of those invoices, none of that work has been done, so that hasn't come through, so that is going to grow. But at the moment, we've spent about ten thousand two hundred pounds on routine repairs, a thousand pounds on our capital project and one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight pounds on van, correcting vandalism that's happened so far. So I'll develop a bit of a more detailed report going forward because I think that's quite important. And then the only other big change is the right open spaces. Up until now, we've been significantly under budgeted. We've now moved, changed that to uh, to an overspend. And that's really, um, we've had to cut and remove a whole lot of rag words. We've had to employ consultants to do that. And again, I think that's one of the things that came out of the management plan discussions that we had. We're going to have to spend a little bit of money because we haven't been able to get grazes on some of the open spaces. This cost might increase in, in this particular year, so we're going to have to take into account that. But otherwise, if you, if you bear in, take into account the, the, the kind of open space management overspend, our expenditure's not too bad. We, we, we've overspent by seven thousand, uh, that nine thousand of that is attributable to um the extra clearing. And our income is up, so we're sitting at about nine thousand nine hundred pounds. Kind of net spend, which is not too bad, considering, you know, compared to previous years.
Any comments or questions on that, Mike?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a comment on the expenditure on play parks, five, four, two, zero. Um, and the comments about vandalism, which sadly I think are well justified. Um, it, it's a really difficult subject and we need to be vigilant as possible to try and nip it in the bud. Um, I think that, that the age group that probably indulges in this vandalism is likely to be, um, I hope it is, a bit below six, sixteen or below. And therefore, uh, they and their children who can't really organise themselves for six weeks of freedom in the summer and get bored, the money's long gone, they've nothing to do and they're bored stiff and get vandalised. As a result, I would hope that now they've gone back to school, sit today, I forget, um, that may well decline. We do also suffer from the fact that it, it tends to go in waves because we'll get a particular active group of children uh who are just a pain for two or three years or for less time, perhaps for ten months or whatever. And eventually they grow out of it or find other interests. Um, some of them even get involved with girlfriends, which I'm assuming they're boys, which is bad, but I shouldn't, um, but you know, other things take their minds off it. So I'm hopeful that we'll see a decline now that. So I'm hopeful that we'll see a decline now that terms back. And hopefully this group will have grown out of it by the time it starts again, um, next year. However, the more vigilant we can be, the better. And I wish we could think of better ways of trying to persuade the public to take an interest in preventing it or not necessarily interfering, but reporting it ASAP. Because sometimes it's key if you can get the knowledge at the moment when it's just finished happening.
Um, so we did a press release on the, did we do a press release on the vandalism?
Yes, please do once, yeah.
Yeah. So trying to raise awareness around that. Did we, um, did read it, but I can't remember now. Did we say about people reporting it? Was that?
Uh, so again, something we can always push out. Yes, doesn't hurt.
I don't think we did a press release.
I don't think we did.
I think it was. No, because it, it, because they're supposed to come to me and nothing's come to me yet.
Well, maybe it was just a post.
Maybe posting, social media posts.
Right. So when I say press release, I mean press release, not Facebook.
Social, social media posts.
No, when I say press release.
You mean the press release?
Yeah. Not a Facebook post.
Yeah. When I just said press release, I meant a Facebook post.
Nicely played.
That was my fault. Um, okay. Was there any other, anything else? Happy to note the report? Great. Okay. So 26123, we have the preliminary financial reports on the cemetery.
Um, again, I'm really stuck because I really can't explain the, the difference in income. Uh, I had a planned meeting with the, with the bureau administrator to get a better understanding of that. That night, that meeting's unfortunately just goes through. Uh, um, so I'm not too sure why our income is, is down. We were supposed to have a meeting, uh, on Friday. Um, that didn't happen unfortunately. Um, and yesterday, today, she's been a bit worked up. So I'm a little bit behind on that. But I really have to get to grips with that because we have a revised budget process happening, uh, next month. And it's really just to understand what's, what is happening. Because, you know, if you look at the internments and the ashes internments, you know, they seem to be relatively high. And the income is not affecting that. So it's just to understand that it could be poor budgeting uh, from our side, this, this finance or the way we've profiled it, or it could be whatever changes have happened. We need to understand that.
Potentially, is, is it because that we no longer get regular money? I mean, because that stopped, that stopped halfway through a year. So it could be a bit of a headache.
I, I think we discussed the balance and when we, when we worked out the impact of that.
And also people seem to be taking on with doing memorials. Because they increasingly spend quite given six months, but sometimes now it's two to three years before the memorial headstones actually appear on the graves after the graves come. So I think it's potentially because of, um, uh, the cost of living prices at the moment. They may be long with delays. So we're not matching up the normal cost that we get associated with one funeral in the same accounting law. So it may well be that there, there was a delay or some, um, uh, sort of over the last five years, some people gave them.
Yeah, I completely agree. I can't do it because I can't explain it. So that's really what I'm trying to get to the situation where I can explain it quite positively. So that meeting will happen, uh, as be next weekend. Next time I report back, I'll be extremely positive.
Any other comments? Okay. So we're noting that, uh, we'll come back to this. Great. Okay. So 26223 is a small grant. I think there's just one. Um, we've got one to review this evening. Did you want to just take us through that, Alan?
I think this is a quite a big project, five, bit of singers. Um, they're looking for some of two hundred and fifty pounds, not the full maximum of three hundred pounds. They're planning a, a spring concert in twenty twenty four. Um, and basically they want to have professional musicians to accompany that, that, uh, choir performance. And they just did a whole lot of fundraising and they looked at us to do that. In terms of the technicality of the grant, they complied with all the conditions, uh, they're registered charity. Their, their charity, their, their reporting to the charity's commission is completely up to date. So it's really just a matter of whether the committee supports the, the kind of project that they want to undertake.
Okay. Does anyone want to, you could put a comment?
Brilliant.
That's what I said.
I think that the double check is, you know, P D C has lost.
Yeah. I think it seems like a positive thing to have an event that the town can benefit from and enjoy. Okay. Everyone's just happy. Very. Nice. So this one, who would like to propose that we are accepting this part? Stuart and second, Chris.
Yes.
Lizzy?
Yes.
It was last one, Tina.
That's all right then. We'll let this stay long.
Second, sorry, second.
Uh, second, Chris, Chris Harvey. Uh, everyone in agreement? Yes. Great.
Hello.
Lovely. Okay. So 26323, as provided in the pack. Alan has been working on revising the town council open space policy. So I'm just wondering if you want to, um, maybe briefly, just give us a bit of background about what this is for, who it would affect, and then just what those revisions are.
We, I was actually asked a year ago, uh, about twenty five to me, this is my action points that I didn't get around to doing it. And I think it really is a matter of just try to work, get, get an open space policy that really works for the council. One of the challenges we have is we have a whole lot of groups that use our open spaces, but they don't necessarily come to the council to, to do that. You know, I always use the example, when I come to a full council meeting on a Tuesday night, there's a whole lot of people having organised activities on Mountford Common. They're just in a small particular area and I know that they haven't applied to the council. They, they, they just do it. So what we did is we just stood back and we actually had a look at, 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 at the, at the forms. Because we've also had people use, apply for open space where it's actually not really appropriate to, to, to what they wanted to do. So what we tried to do is we came up with, with the concept of you use our, our open spaces predominantly or, you know, you're solely for your particular purpose. So that would typically be an organisation. So if I think of Larry Gray Circus coming to Mountford Common, when he comes into the common, no one else can basically use it. And then you have, uh, uh, a personal benefit where someone might get together with three or four people and do an activity. And that would be for personal benefit. So what we've done is we've made, we've made a distinction between that. So we said, if you predominantly use it, uh, uh, or, or one sole use of it, part B of the policy applies to you. And if you're just a member of the public and you want to use it, just be aware that we have certain open space, uh, requirements. And then we've put that into a part A and we've made the distinction between the two of them. So that's really the, 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 what are the kind of major changes. So part A, which deals with, with members of the public, just sets out, uh, certain things that people can't do. Uh, we have had a request very recently, uh, uh, for metal detecting on our open spaces. So we've kind of put that as a prohibited activity because if you imagine people were going into Mountford Common or any of our other, uh, barn across common and doing prospect, you know, metal detecting and digging holes. Uh, I think our insurers wouldn't be very happy with us. And I think the risk associated with that is a lot higher than any potential reward. But we've just set out certain behaviours. We understand that we have no enforcement rights. So if members of the public, you know, some are spoiling, uh, social behaviour, for example, they would have to, they'd have to report that through to Norfolk, uh, uh, police. Because that would be the body, but we have no, no kind of warning or anyone showing that. Um, the, the, the second part and part B is we've actually integrated on two particular areas. The first one is toilet provision, because that was an issue that came out, uh, earlier on. So someone, for example, comes into Mountford Common, does a big event. So the local businesses that actually pick up the flats or the, you know, have to provide the toilet provision. So what we've done is we've said, on any event that happens after five P M. And which is where there's no toilet, you know, local toilet provision, they would have to actually pay the, 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 the town council to keep our toilets open. Or they would have to hire their own, their own, their own toilets. So that's quite a significant change. And I think that would be quite important because like I say, the people, you know, particularly Mountford Common, where they have events and they don't provide toilets. The, the poor local businesses are, are having to, to do that. And then the other thing that we've come up with is a parking plan. And I think, you know, we were quite horrified to see after one of the events that, you know, people, that it wasn't our open space, but it was another council's open space and cars are parked in that. Uh, uh, and there was, we had actually left them as unmoored areas, you know, for wildlife, wild flowers. And, and that had been used. So what we've come up with and said, if you have a significant event, you need to come up with a parking plan. And you need to make sure that you, that you consider it to neighbours and you respect third party, uh, property. And then the last change is really around charges for, for, uh, charitable or non-commercial activities. And at the moment, it's the hire that's determining whether they're a charity or non-commercial activity. And, and I don't think that that's appropriate because, you know, if I look at some of the events, there's a whole lot of commercial activities that happen on them. The, the, the hire is not necessarily, uh, commercial, but they, they are renting out, you know, facilities for people to come and you know, have a bar facility and a food facility. So there are a lot of commercial activities happening. So what I've tried to do in this policy is say that there will be a charge and we've instituted a charge for charitable and non-commercial. But it's up to the discretion of the committee to waive it rather than the individual deciding, well, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to pay because I don't believe that I put them to that. So those are the, those are the, the, the basic changes that we've put in place. We've made some other changes. We included land that wasn't even ours and previous policies that that's gone out. And Lady Gentle Meadow is owned by the Lady Gentle Memorial Trust. That for six months of the year, that piece of ground has to be used as playground or as a playground. And for the other six months of the year, it's the town council can determine how it's used. But that's really, you know, a summary of the changes. We've made things like the, for large events, the, uh, safer group, uh, in licensing, uh, assess, assess that. It's not, it's not a temporary events notice. Uh, that only applies to smaller events. And we've just made sure that those, that hires are aware of those requirements and that they obtain the necessary certification. And I will stop there.
Hey, any anything from anybody? Mike?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to refer to the, one of the bits you put in your summary. It's actually on the screen now, item two. Part A includes prohibited activities and there is a good list of prohibited, prohibited activities. I wonder whether that place or some other point, it should specifically add, or we should specifically add dogs running free. Um, we have quite a lot of problems with dogs on some of the open spaces because they, uh, can, some of it's a few of them, I know. But the fact is dogs that are not on a lead are able to attack, uh, the animals we have grazing. And it's led to the withdrawal of the flying, um, sheep or whatever it is, it seems to be the main sufferers. Um, because they, the owners feel, quite rightly, are being, uh, attacked by dogs. So can we just, could, I wonder whether we could add that to the list. So among the prohibited activities is dogs running free. But I, I don't think it's said anywhere, anywhere in this document and that surprises me. Cause we've gone to trouble putting signs up saying, keep a dog in a lead. Why, I think we should have it in here as well.
Is the general consensus that we're happy with?
Yes. Okay. Of course. Can I just, sorry, just check up, because it was the open area policy, wasn't it? If people are planning an event, these things are, what does that mean? It's strict to anything, like playing loud music. Sorry, just make your turn to speak correctly, because I think you may, you want to think. Cause it's in part A, this bit where we talk about the pivot, isn't it? That's if anyone's basically just using it. So if anyone is there, full stop, not if anyone's specifically doing an event.
Correct.
Yep. Yep.
Is the only thing with the, um, the part A is that we don't, you would have to look at this policy to know, um, what's prohibited. Um.
We could promote that. Because, you know, I, I, I'm not sure whether the committee's, we want to put signs everywhere, you know, because sometimes that has, it would be up to the committee to decide that. But that's the only, if you have this dude, or you could just keep promoting your first policy. Imagine people were.
So would promoting it be enough? So if somebody had their dog off a lead, was metal detecting, whatever. Is it possible to then just refer to the policy? If, if there's no signs up, are we able to actually?
Yes, our problem is even if they do that, we can't enforce any action against them.
Yeah. But it, say if, um, because we, with the management plan, we talked about having just local people who are dog walkers, who help with keeping dogs on leads and things. If somebody went and said that there's no signs, well, there'd be dog walking sign. So metal detecting. If somebody said, actually, that's a prohibited activity here. Is it enough that this is, it's part of the policy and there aren't signs up about these activities?
I think that would be up to the committee. You know, it's, it's.
Signs and then then we won't have disability.
Okay. Discussion for another day.
Include the policy and then the promotion of the policy. Sorry.
I don't know if it's worth the weight to cover. Didn't buy this as well. I have a roommate, Maggie, which she was probably.
Uh, someone has commented, has written to us. I got a, a letter via council layer that I had an email said to be directed today. Uh, um, we own so little waterways. I'm not sure we've ever classified our waterways as open space. So.
Literally, I'm quite a tall mother, that's it.
Okay. So, um, would we, who'd like to be the proposer to accept the provisions? Yes. Thank you. And second up, Stuart. And is everybody in agreement?
Yeah. Good job.
Okay. So next up, um, Alan's been busy revising policies. We have 26423, the revised small grant policy. Yeah, if I hand that over.
This policy wasn't significantly changed, uh, to the extent that the open space one was. I think the reason why it was, we asked to review it was to, it was, there basically, um, four changes. One is that our grant, our details actually restrict us to helping organisations situated in Thetford rather than benefiting Thetford residents. So we've just made that distinction to say, we see, we have highlighted it in yellow. Uh, that used to be the old provision and what we've just done is all provide direct benefit to all of some of the town's residents. And the reason that came out, for example, there was a special school, uh, and now within eighty percent of the, of the students were, were, uh, Thetford, were based in Thetford and therapy at the small ground programme, they would have been excluded because the school was physically situated outside. So we've just given that flexibility, uh, all of that. The second one is, 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 uh, we've just streamlined a little bit of the, of the process. Because what was happening previously is we always demanded documentation that's freely available on charity's website. So if someone's a registered charity, we don't need to be able to send us copies and, and copy this information. We can actually go in and actually see it ourselves. And it's a lot easier to do that and, and to distribute it. The third, uh, and probably the other change is setting the threshold. And you'll see that, uh, I went out a little bit of a link here and just put five hundred pounds. And whether that's, uh, again, if I go back to why we were asked to revise it, is that previously, you know, one of the, one of the committee members brought back and said, well, if I bought this five years ago, this cost two hundred and fifty pounds. If I tried to buy it today, I wouldn't be able to even buy half of that. So really it's just setting the threshold of the amount as to what should, what should the limitation be on the small grant scheme. And it's really, you know, I've put five hundred pounds, the committee might think, as a sudden decker number. In terms of the funding window, we've only, we've budgeted six thousand pounds for that and we're sitting at two thousand, three hundred. Although bear in mind that four of the grants, half of our grants were actually approved on, on the last year. But we just couldn't accrue them just because the paper, certain paperwork hadn't been done. So on average, you know, we, I just underspent the last two years. Um, and it's really just a matter of what is appropriate.
Okay. So I guess the, well, um, in terms of the money, it would be good to get thoughts on that because it's a threshold rather than, we're not going to be giving that amount out to everybody. They'd need to break down and show what they were spending the money on. Um, so whether we're comfortable with five hundred, if we felt groups would benefit from more than that. Terry?
Um, as a Breckland councillor, I'm able to, um, request household referral grants uh, for individual households, which with amounts of three hundred pounds. which were amounts of three hundred pounds. So you would feel, or I would feel, that three hundred is probably too low compared to that, and I would suggest that five hundred isn't a bad figure, but perhaps twice there. Something, something, you know, I'm not saying a figure, but something around twice what we give out for household referrals.
Let's go, let's see, it's gone up. That's when I first called the council, we had four grants, they gave five grants, and we could give up to three thousand tons. Then we could be lost. Do that. And so please, it's got to be five hundred.
And groups can only apply once a year, so that would be all they could apply for in a year.
It's only really, what's that, an iron pound? I don't know how to say, of course, I don't use that. Are they really?
Three hundred ninety-nine quid.
Okay, but the point, the point is, the point is.
I would be tempted to say a little bit more than five hundred, bearing in mind I'm not every.
We have an option here.
The balancing factor is, if you put it too much high, you're minimizing the amount communities can actually provide. Yeah, it's, because if you've got a budget of six thousand, you can only do it straight up to the value of six thousand. If you've got five hundred, you could help twelve organisations. If you did a thousand, you could help six organisations.
But theoretically, it's a threshold, so people could apply, but as much as they needed, then it's a five, maximum amount.
Well, if the threshold was seven hundred and fifty, they could apply for seven hundred, if you apply for five hundred. But what I'm saying is, if you've only got half of six thousand, then there's a maximum.
Obviously, it goes, it goes out quickly.
Yes.
Yeah, and if that is just a credit, they don't have to apply to be maximum amount, because that would be more.
My understanding is that, am I right in thinking that all these applications for us come before the committee? Or then we can decide how much we pay on an individual basis. There might be some people that we feel deserve board. And so really, we can, you know, with, you know, reasonable limitations, set the threshold wherever we like, huh?
In a technical question, if someone comes to us and says, I want a litter picking group, I want six hundred pounds, the maximum that we're offering, and then they give a breakdown, can we go back to them and say, actually, we think this would be a more reasonable amount to apply for? Would that happen before it came to committee, or that would just, it's either a yes or a no?
Has been, yes and no. And the reason is that was, you know, the phrase, all we do as officers is we're checking the framework. We're just saying, you know, the, the, the actual project that's being funded is, is for the committee to determine. And, you know, if you don't determine appropriately, you wouldn't fund any of it, you know. But we would like to do those offices, certainly not.
That's the complete for six hours and up to twelve. The money is available for small grants.
I'm all for that.
I mean, it used to be very much like, we used to give three and a half thousand to the C A P, I don't know.
That'd be a budget decision then.
It would, yeah, okay, but that was, I would, okay.
So at five hundred, that's twelve projects if they requested the full amount, which would be one a month.
What's the sort of the running rate at the moment? Is there many people?
We have one out in the wings. We didn't, this is our first one. We didn't have one in July.
Cricket club in June.
The cricket club was, that was, that one, we didn't have, that was August, we didn't have any in July, and we've got one for the next week.
So it's not, it's not overly used, is it? So five hundred is probably.
Terry?
Am I right in thinking that at the moment, small grants are not available for running costs?
That's true.
You are correct. Okay, I'm not a member of committee, but I would suggest we change that. As I said earlier, I like an allegory, and the old one is, give a man a fish each day, teach a man a fish, teach him a lifetime. And I think we can do so much more by giving grants out on running costs, to be honest, and I don't really see why there should be that restriction faced in the first place. I think if you're going to give grants for running costs, then surely it tells you that people aren't, they can't keep their own grants for running costs. If they're struggling, yeah, we, I know Breckland offer three hundred pounds for hardship grant, but there's only so much you can grant them, isn't there? Because if you've got a business that comes to us, we can have five hundred grants, we need this, that, that. What are they going to do next month? What are they doing the following month? I think it should just be left as, you know, maybe little start-up businesses, you know, little, you know, groups that need a little bit of instant funding that would help them.
I, maybe I'm wrong, but I do think in terms of fundraising and groups doing that, grants can be used as part of their strategy for raising money. And so personally, I wouldn't have a problem with it covering running costs. Okay, I've lost track of you, because I had that first mic.
Yes, I'm basically with you still, I don't think running costs would be available. We want to make sure that the money goes to viable organisations which are able to run themselves and perhaps want to extend what they do or to try something new, rather than saying, this is an organisation which is actually not viable. But if the town council will bail us out, then we might survive for another year. I'll just feel that that's giving the wrong vibes out. I'll take the point that we've got the money and it's not rapidly going down. You could argue that therefore the reason, the answer to that is to have a higher maximum, maybe eight hundred, for example, rather than five hundred. But I'm, I'm not over happy about giving people running costs.
Doug?
I mean, playing a word game, an accounting trick here, because, I mean, like most, most ones we've come across us, they've come up for, for example, the Trafalgar Association, we want to produce listening, there weren't really any running costs, but we could actually say just replenishing our equipment isn't running cost. So we're not just being a little bit, yeah, playing with definitions in a weird way here. That's, that was like for me.
I'm a big fan of, okay, to run out of shop on the Abbey Estate. They have everything they need in terms of materials, but they struggle with running costs. They're a fantastic, brilliant community charity that do so much good for this town. I don't see why we should limit them in terms of potential grants they might receive.
I agree with that. I think that if, like, say, it could be any kind of organisation that's benefiting the town, and that is the purpose of these grants. So if it's an organisation doing kids' activities in the summer or whatever it might be, if we're helping them keep running, they're not going to be able to keep coming back again and again. It would just be a small boost to what they require.
And when they apply to grant, and sometimes people get details on what they've done on using the money for, don't they? So presumably, if we bought, well, actually, you're doing it responsibly, they'll turn it down. So if it was just a metro staff or something, which it's, these tend not to be. But yeah, I personally agree. I think it makes sense just to allow us to be able to give it to people who need it and are doing good stuff.
Kind of helping them flourish, rather. Chris?
Actually, the wording does say, let's have a look here now. It's a new activity, so it's not normally for routine general maintenance or running costs, so theoretically, it just thinks in there already.
That's what we're saying. We want to take that out, we want to say, because does that mean?
That actually does support the, the fact that you could use it for running, and not normally for routine, yes. Well, I don't know why we bought the running cost thing in the first place, right at the beginning. I know, for the life of my car, whatever. Why we brought the running cost thing in. But I know it has been a criteria ever since I've been here, I don't know why.
Interesting, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm going to have to try and find out why we brought it in.
Bear in mind that all these things do come before me. Sorry, go on.
I, I, I think because you're assessing the actual, each application, you can actually make a judgment call as to what.
I agree.
So if it was, for example, just paying rent or, you, you, you might have a different viewpoint if it was doing something else. So, so you, you, you still have the, the, the ability to vet what, what the project is about, what the funds are going to be used. So if you excuse us, you still have the check and balance that the committee have accepted decision.
Yeah, I think if someone came to us and said, we're about to lose the building, can you get us through another month? That's going to be different to somebody saying we could use this bit of extra support at this moment in time.
Yeah, I, I think, I think personally that we've got it exactly right at the moment, because as has been pointed out, that word normally is a legal word. It basically says, if you're going to make an extreme case, then you can use it for running costs. But I, I have a concern about generally just saying it, but everyone can have their running costs. You, you can't really justify, well, my concern partly is that, is that anyone can turn up and say, can you give us the running cost, please? How are we going to distinguish between those that are viable and those that really aren't viable? We, we, we tend to say, yes, have the money, now it's up to you to justify it, to spend it wisely. I, I think we've got it about right, you know, if we include that normally, what it means is, normally, running costs don't attract money, but if there's a particular case in a particular situation, you gave an example, and the one that you mentioned, Terry, I'm, I'm very sympathetic for that particular case. But I'd be, I'd be concerned if they say, oh, that's great, we'll have it again the next year, and the year after, the year after. And if not, then there needs to be a different way of solving that problem.
You're totally saying that you normally only get one once.
Once a year.
Yeah.
So they can come back next year and say, we want a running cost again, please.
And we make a judgment on that.
But we, but we can do that anyway, because of the word normally.
But as I say, we favour applications from organisations that have not received a grant before.
And we have done that before, actually. We have, we have occasionally given running costs and said, this is an abnormal situation, we'll make an exception.
But why keep that limitation? Why not just throw it open?
Yeah, but I guess the difficulty of just leaving it as it is, it's not kind of overtly telling people that you can use it this way, you know. I guess that's the difference, and if we want to make a change, we want to tell people about that.
Yeah, and I do wonder if, if an organisation in Thetford is really benefiting the town, and all they need to keep running is five hundred pounds a year, would that be the worst thing that would happen?
So, Marty? You know what, hypothetically, if you had, we was giving out grants to people that, you know, wanted to sort of running costs, that it probably obviously should be worded differently. When you look at, if you suddenly had twelve little small businesses, but they suddenly said, we're in trouble, we need, we need five hundred pounds, and we go, yeah, 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 yeah. And then you get the genuine person that says, I want a little, you know, fun day for my little playgroup, I need two hundred and fifty quid, I'm going to go and think. And it's, it's not, you know. It's not either or, is it? I think it's not, I think it's a case of the grants there is to help, help people, you know, do little, little things like little fates and little, you know, plays and things like that. And buy, you know, necessary things for functions. I don't think it is for running costs.
But I also don't think we would, every business that would come to us, because they're not all benefiting the town and the people of the town necessarily.
I think then it becomes word of mouth, because I've, as a Breckland councillor, I've, I've given out, well, I've not given out, I've had twelve residents in the last three weeks, a message me rather begun hardship grants. Now, I've not messaged them, you know, one, there was, you know, one resident, and they've spoke to another resident, they spoke to another, and it's just felt like a domino effect. And would that then become a domino effect if you had a small business? Well, we still retain the right to refuse them.
Ah, that's, that's where the difficulty arises, because then we are making judgements between two, three, fifteen different, and that's where.
We sort of already are.
People then complain, you gave the money to them, where's ours? That, that's what we've tried to avoid in the past, and I think this will bring it in. You know, every sports club would say, well, we're, we're, we're good for Thetford, we're, we're developing the, the public health at Thetford, give us some money. I don't see how we can turn people down, like, saying running costs is available to anyone. How do we then say, you're not getting any money?
Firstly, I'm confused by small businesses. The grant is for not-for-profit organisations and charities, right? So obviously, it's, it's going to be for organisations that are doing good work in Thetford. On that last point, I, I go again, you've got my experience, this may have happened in the past, but from my early tendencies, and this obviously plays on actually how much we think grants should be out, because that's what actually started this discussion. What we're trying to work out is, it looks like we actually tend not to spend the money. So if we loosen it, we then give ourselves more courage and get more people being able to access it for money, and that's surely what it's there for, to be used. If we end up finding that there's, people do, you know, leave that situation you were talking about, and then is that not something we can change again in the future and go, actually, yes, okay? Running costs is gone. I think to me, it feels like we're in a position where we can relax it and see how it goes and change the grant scheme again if we're finding that actually not got it right. That's my perspective at least.
Okay, oh, Chris, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to remember, I don't remember if I've ever given a small grant to a small business, clearly everything I've done has been charitable.
It is.
For groups like the Simons Music Project, enable various other things, but I would appreciate a piece of that. The small grants are not to support small business, the small grants are to support charitable organisations that do, do this. And I, I'm still trying to think back to why we put the running costs in, and it was a criterion at the time, and I would be quite happy to let stuff.
I think the issue about this stuff, because that isn't something that could be.
Okay. But, I mean, you know. So it's more put in place to take us out of an awkward situation where we have to say we don't feel that that's an appropriate use of the money?
I think if, if I was a small people applying to something, and it said that I could apply for running costs, then I would apply for something more specific that wasn't running costs and not just charity.
Doug, did you have your hand up?
No, sorry.
Okay, so I kind of feel like we've got two things here. We, should we take a vote on whether we want to add the change, running, the running costs thing or not? Is that?
I think we'll propose that as an amendment to what's been proposed, because we're proposing the new grant application. Since we, we are suggesting we vote on an amendment, where we exclude the costs.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay, I don't know how to word that.
If somebody wants to propose an amendment, what the amendment is, you vote on it, and then it then goes through, and that's that done, but if it doesn't go through, it goes back to the original one.
I have proposed the amendment that we remove the restrictions on running costs.
Okay, second up. Okay, yeah, Ian. Sorry, I should have said Doug was the proposer, Ian the second up. And then do we take a vote on, okay, so vote all in favour of the amendment?
Sorry, in favour of.
Of moving.
Moving.
Yeah, thank you.
Do I vote?
Yes, you do.
See, you do.
I found out after, sorry, sorry about that.
You're not the.
I need to.
No, you can't vote until.
Yes, you, yes, you can. Those are best two votes.
It's necessary to, yeah, only if it's five-five, then she's entitled to a costume.
I think it is, I think we're three-three, aren't we?
It's looking like that a little bit, but.
So the leader doesn't carry it, but there wasn't a majority vote.
You do have to do the actual vote, so you have to do the four near votes, and then you have to record the casting vote.
Forward and out.
Yeah.
Doug, again?
Sorry, I thought, I thought, I announced that we've lost, we thought we'd heard you.
I still can't see the new for it. We're committing adjusting words, very clever.
Seven, oh, seven. So three-three, yeah, passing that.
Okay, so I keep my original vote, right?
And then it's recorded, that's the chair's vote for top three.
Okay, and then, okay, so that was that amendment. Do we want to amend this suggestion of five hundred pounds? Anyone want to propose a different?
What is it? One, just better as um that policy with the.
I've just done the vote on the amendment.
Oh, I see, I thought I was just voting for that amendment.
Just voting on the amendment.
Just the amendment for the operating costs.
Okay, but the five hundred pounds is in the document, isn't it?
Yeah, so we just.
Wanted, then they've already done the vote.
Yeah, just.
It's already in the document, so if you're accepting the document with that amendment, then.
We need to vote on accepting the document now, and so do we not get the chance to amend it again? But theoretically amend the amount. That would be one amendment, removing this clause.
More one amendment.
Changing the amount, and then we have third vote on whether we accept the document or not, is that not the process?
If you only want to do one more amendment, so you don't have millions of votes. I would like your last amendment that you check the amount and adopt the document with the agreed amendments. Otherwise, we're going to have lots of points.
Yeah. If it is any help, I don't, I'm happy with five hundred pounds, I don't suggest amending it personally, but.
Me too.
Everyone happy with five hundred pounds?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't it?
We don't need to do another vote?
I don't.
Oh, this is shilling. Okay.
When it's ready, I'll play the council meetings, I'm sure you can get on.
Right, so we're done with that piece, great.
Call of your attention to the tile at eight o'clock, we'll have to ask if we can sort of establish a reference length of tile meeting.
Okay, in that case, are there any items that we should bring to?
Then we can continue, actually.
Okay, but we just have to ask, I guess if anyone's unhappy, it'd be good.
If you just ask, please, just go and stand your order of reference and let them interview you out, and then we can move on.
Okay, I need to say that now or in five minutes?
If you want to do it now, it's out of the way, it's a big one, right?
Okay, um. Don't remember what you.
To request the committee to establish standing orders, reference the the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Or what?
I don't know what I just said.
If you're happy with that, then that's that's.
Okay, so is everyone happy with consolidating, basically? Okay, proposer to continue, Chris, seconda. Yeah, Ian. Everyone okay?
Sarah's on your line.
Okay, is everyone like happy with that?
I have to leave, but someone's surely, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's get moving then. Um, two hundred and sixty-five, twenty-three, request to hold an event on Ford Meadow, Barnham Cross Common. Um Alan, did you want to just give us an overview?
Firstly, with uh B V R fasts. Uh, yeah, permission to do two guided walks in Tethford. They've submitted two applications for each event, one is on the twelfth of February. And it's all part of the Walk Norfolk Festival. Uh they have had similar events uh like this in the past. Uh the rest, everything is provided, the the risk assessments, the um uh safeguarding and the the public insurance. And it's really just a matter of um see under each of its plans. But before in the documentation, um it really is just making walking uh accessible. And just doing a guided walk.
Okay, um and that's, anyone have any comments or concerns? Okay, seems good, okay, so do we need to? Okay, proposer, Chris, seconda. Doug? Everyone happy with that? Great. Right, I think we've done the master plan, so two hundred and sixty-seven, twenty-three. Um so we started the discussion on toilet cleaning options in a previous meeting. So Alan's taken away the suggestions from there and come back with some options. Um so I think looking at this, we either need to decide if we're happy with an option or if we want other information.
I think you just the decision of principle is what what you do, this committee will establish a recommendation to have the staff establishment changed. Uh it's one of the outcomes of.
Okay, Doug, was your hand up?
Yeah, so can I just double check my drawing, I'm reading budgets well, in our preliminary financial amenities budget. Uh if we went with this option, this would replace five, four, seven, zero toilet expenditure.
Do most of it, there is a little bit of increased maintenance within the toilet expenditure, but but that's.
This is that line of the budget.
I could run through the options.
Um. Yeah, does it, or does anyone want to run through them?
Everyone written?
Okay, well, yeah, run through.
So so what I did is, two options, I I broke it down into four uh uh four kind of sub-options. Uh the first one was to say, well, do we have a a a full-time member of staff Monday to Friday? And then a contractor on the Saturday, Sunday and bank holiday. And the reason I came up with that sub-option is one of our risks is is one is we don't have a backup in the weekend. So I'll give you the example of the cemetery a few a few weeks ago, it might be two, two months ago, where one of our staff members happened to drive past, the cemetery saw it was closed on Saturday, I think on a Sunday morning, and actually went and opened it up and then made contact and 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 found out what the cost was. You have to have some support in place, because if someone doesn't open the toilets on Saturday or Sunday, it's probably the same, finding that out on a Monday morning, you know, with 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 phone calls. So so what we looked at, say, if we had a full-time staff member contract on the weekend, we do not have to 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 enter into contracts, change employee contracts for standbys, come up with with a standby system. If we are going to, if 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 we're familiar with the other options, for example, option B, we have two full-time staff working. We have to have a backup there on a weekend, because at the moment, on a Monday to Friday, I will pass the case of a toilet. We will see whether they're open or closed in on a weekend, it might not be that. Then we might have a market supervisor, for example, that might provide, be able to provide cover or buy that awareness on a Saturday. But we could be stuck on a Sunday and at a bank holiday. So so option A is really is the is the only constant option, because it's full-time staff member, a contractor, and all you'd have to do is provide leave for the full-time staff member, and you could cost that in as to what what it costs. And option B, uh which is, we have two full-time staff members, there's an element of rotary. So you I can't say, well, it's, you know, twenty, forty-eight days of leave that has to be covered. And we'd have to get an extra cover for that, because you might be able to change the rotor, someone might wear five days in a week and then the other person two days. Then we're not too sure of the leave pattern. So I didn't want to put those various calculations in, because it becomes quite misleading. Uh but if we had two full-time staff members working basically fifty-one hour weeks, because that's what they're recovering, on a rotor basis, that cost would come out of thirty-seven, seven, one, five. Let me just move back the presentation, because I haven't been good at doing that. Third option, sub-option, is that you could look at at part-time staff. So you say, well, you have a part-time staff working on a on a on a rotor. Uh so again, they would work, they would work full seven or seven and a half hour a day, they would work reduced hours, and they were just covering two toilets, do 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 an inch of clean and then go home. And we costed up that option. Again, the start, the start lead aspect of that and the coverage of that, I just can't estimate. I have to make some outrageous uh uh assumptions. And then the fourth option is to have a full-time staff member um and a part-time, a full-time staff member uh uh in place and a part-time staff member to reduce part of the cost. And they would work uh uh possibly, you know, on the rotor, you'd you'd be able to accommodate your full-time worker into the works team as much as possible. Uh certainly, it's it's a, if you had a three, four workday split, you'd have four days working with 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 works team. And that's the other challenge that we have on a full-time worker on a Saturday and Sunday, who supervises the insurance that we actually get a tip out of. So I've done the option analysis on that particular basis. I've put the gross salary cost of total cost of employment as a costed in. I've used the latest agency costs to get their their costs that what we pay at the moment uh uh for agents that we use on on a day-to-day basis, and this basically comes out. But this, a couple of provisos, what is reputational damage, damage to the council? If someone's all sick and everyone's monitoring that? The need to have a standby allowance, uh uh and the need to ensure that you have supervision uh on the on the days we, if you have full-time staff working on a Saturday, Sunday, the bank holiday, that there's a supervision. Yes, so those are the options, uh uh that I've established. I thought I could highlight, go down a little bit more, but all I would do is just create more and more complex spreadsheets. But I think we'd be moving away from the from the gist of what what the decision has to be made.
Okay, so I I feel like uh option A gives us the most flexibility. We'd have a full-time staff member employed, we'd have then agency staff to cover the extra things. If we then further down the line felt we wanted to add a part-time staff member or another full-time staff member, we could make that decision later. So there's more flexibility with that.
It is designed that, yeah, I mean, you might decide in a year's time, you know, uh uh that you run, you're full-time, well, there's enough work, we've taken on other responsibilities. And that would then work for that, because your agency staff is basically on a, you know, it's it's on a max, probably a week-to-week basis, right? That are, that are, that are, you know, full of prime bests.
Tina, this is just an operating, it would be the finance aside, because I know that's one consideration. But operationally, because the problem that we had when it was just our own employees, is if anybody went sick, the knock-on effect to the rest of the town team. And if people went sick for a week or two weeks and things like that, that was actually very difficult. If a person, ill person can't work the whole seven days. So um and and it made it very difficult, we'd given them time off when they were covering each other. Um and so from an actual delivery, and what we then did is because we were pulling the bodies off everything else at the time we did it. The standard of what they were doing was dropping as well as the standard in in the toilets. Because literally, if anything happened during the day, we'd be phoning up and going, can you come off the common? Because I need you to do this, can you, oh, sorry, I know that he was going to be doing this next week, but actually now he's got work all weekend. And and that caused us big problems, because we're only a small team. So when you, when you have to take that around. So I think that um we have a slightly different structure now and what we do and how we're managing um those jobs. So for me, I think that having a period where there's a mixture that we can adapt the other bit once we find out how well that works. From a purely delivery point of view, it's potentially the best option on the table.
Okay, and that would be option A, one full-time staff member in an agency. Okay, so then on, Chris?
Yeah, what do you think? I think, no, pretty good, what do you?
Yeah, so again, with Tina, um sort of saying how it affected the team, it did affect the team quite badly on the day-to-day sort of side of things. Um because obviously I was losing a team member off the the nine-town team, um so it affected some of the jobs, we had to rerota um different jobs. Um yeah, I think a mixture to begin with, and then just sort of develop it from that point, so it gives you that flexibility, yeah.
You you'll be quite happy.
I think with option A.
You could find enough jobs for this chat.
Oh, definitely, definitely. More jobs.
Okay, so um with, looks like we're looking at option A, do we have a proposer? And a seconda, Stuart? And everybody in agreement? Okay, so that brings us on to two hundred and sixty-eight, twenty-three, the update on management plan and presentation. Do you want to hand the guys, please, to you? Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, so a quick update, uh so we had um two separate presentations that were recently held on the management plans um for the open spaces. First presentation was held on the Castle Park and Ford Meadow. The second presentation was held on the Barnham Cross Common, Main Street Woods and Fredericks Wood. Um so preliminary action point of plans were identified at each management meeting to give officers a way forward. These have been tabled at these this immunity committee meeting to give direction and to enable more formal costed plans to be formally adopted by the committee. First one um was Castle Park, um action plans for the committee to consider. Uh so the management plan contains an outline of the Castle Hill area, showing what areas should be tackled first, divided by the number one. Find a new sheep grazer that can be used to put sheep on the castle park to graze it. Using internal fencing, block off an area where the public can access, so that the sheep are protected from possible dog attacks. And appoint a contractor for mechanical cutting on the course of the grazer will be able to put sheep on to help maintain the area that was mechanically cut going forward. Uh number five, set up a communication process so the public are aware of the steps being taken and rational uh for doing so. Ford Meadow, action plans for the committee uh to consider, source a new grazer as a first step. Ideally, there will need to be a cut and collect in August and September, the month coming up. Uh therefore, after Ford Meadow can be grazed to help control vegetation growth. Suggestion that a survey be done now to set a benchmark and thereafter, further surveys to show what impact the new management regime will have on unmanaged areas. This applies to Ford Meadow and Castle Park. Barnham Cross Common, action plans. Uh the mapping on the next page is a prioritised schedule of work to be done depending on affordability and manpower resources. There was a need to balance the consequence of losing R P A monies versus the cost of undertaking the management of the common, which is theoretically funded by the R P A monies. Once four above has been done, it may be necessary to prepare five-year affordable management plan to address the priorities identified in the map above. Uh Fredericks Wood, there were no priorities identified in these management plans.
Okay, any comments on that? I think we're just saying that we're all happy to note that that's there and we'll be carrying on with that.
Yeah.
No, no vote needed?
No, 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 no. But I think I think what we've done is, we, Nick's really started to get the process in place, talk to graziers and and uh mechanical cutting and one of the options and fencing, and that will be put to this committee in a more formal basis once we have that particular information. At the moment, I mean, the last presentation was last week, Tuesday, so the other one was Friday, it's a bank holiday. So it's, it just quite, couldn't get enough information together.
We had one initial quote, um which came in quite extortionate, there was quite a lot of money. Um so I've managed to get hold of another two companies that do conservation land management and maintenance. So hopefully we'll get another couple of quotes coming in, so that'll give us the three quotes to kind of vary out for each of the areas going forward. Um we've also, yeah, with the professional experts coming in and doing this sort of management plan talks with us. Um I've been able to sort of get some contacts of possible graziers and things, so just to get anybody just to come in and sort of temporarily help us out to graze some of them areas that possibly could reduce costs down, mechanical cutting if we can, fingers crossed.
Great, okay, and this, I only went to the first management plan presentation, but this really well summarises what was discussed there, so that's really good. Okay, so we all happy, great, good work? Excellent, so move on to two hundred and sixty-nine, twenty-three, any correspondence received? Is this um where we wanted to mention sending a letter for the litter to?
The actual parents.
On the actual, great, okay, so we've done two six nine. Uh two hundred and seventy, action points from previous meetings.
If I could run through, I think we have put a status we've achieved uh by significant amounts. Uh anything that's uh we haven't formalised is around two oh four twenty-three, which is further down. Uh I verbally gave feedback on that information, it wasn't actually written down, so I'll sort that out going forward. So I've just done my presentation. Uh I think we've done another one that I possibly achieved it on. Okay, just that one. Otherwise, the status of all the items there, so we'll remove those that are done, that have been addressed in this meeting, so I think.
Great, working hard. Brilliant, okay, was there anything on those? All happy, great. Um, two hundred and seventy-one, twenty-three, community engagement. So was there anything from today that we wanted to, any media releases or things we wanted to do? The only thing I was going to ask was with the BF, BFER walks, will we support those through our social media and share expensive things?
Yes, we may want to change to the small ground scheme.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can do that as a, a social media post to say, remind people it exists as well and say that we've updated it.
Right, so after the council, just in case. Shouldn't, but.
Okay, is that everything on that one? So finally, 27223, committee officers update for anything that's arrived since the agenda was issued. Great, how do I close the meeting? Meeting's now closed, thank you.
Option, we say.